As the atomic clock says, it's time.
Yep.
The meeting to order, please join me in the flag slip.
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Sowers.
Here.
Allenbaugh's class. Kelski.
Have you been?
Okay, Willie.
An excuse for Dave.
I'll make a motion that we excuse Mr. Allenbaugh tonight.
Second.
Moved in second in the conference person, Allenbaugh be excused. This evening, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Need to approve your agenda.
How would we approve tonight's agenda with the addition of addressing the new draft ordinance?
No number.
No number on it?
No.
For the short-term rentals under New Business.
I'll second that. All right, approval's been proposed with an addition of the draft short-term rental agreement on it under New Business, I assume. With the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No public hearings that I know about. I don't think there's anything. All right, important correspondence, we have a proposed 2020 budget for Kittitas County EMS for the coming year. For our jurisdiction budget planning needs, please find attached. Appears to be a increase in our share of that of about $200. $220 exactly. And as I understand it, this will be in front of COG for approval this fall sometime. So, we're armed. You got a copy of that? We have a letter from the Department of Commerce. Everybody should have a copy, if you don't, the nice people over there said we have, they thanked us for sending growth management services, adopted ordinance number 592. This ordinance summarizes completion of the comp plan and development regulation update process required under RCW 36.78.130, period. So, we're all up to date in the Department of Commerce's review basis. Nice to know.
It's nice that they recognize that grain on the resources for that, too.
It is. And it says, "We recognize a substantial investment of time, energy, and resources that these documents represent." Congratulations to you, your planning commission, staff, involved citizens, for the good work represented by your update. Signing Dave Anderson.
Want to copy this, we sent for a lightning question, so they can see it as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, they need some photos, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
We put two time into it.
And Michelle.
And Michelle, yes, sorry.
Great.
I wasn't thinking already, I just did think about it.
The other correspondence? There's some correspondence about the second annual sewer meeting that was postponed from June the 30th to July the 30th, and it got canceled. Do we have any more? Okay. All right, moving on to people. Ernell and Ernest Kraft, having to do with nuisance violation letter. Vern's first on the list.
So, you only just sit right here and talk, or stand up, or what do you want to do?
Whatever you're comfortable with, introduce yourself and...
Okay. My name is Ernell, and I've lived here in South Plowell for more than 30 years. I recognize just about everybody here except for this gentleman in the corner. Gary helped me out with some electrical stuff, Jim, you know, and I basically have just given my notification to the fire department after 27-plus years of working for the volunteer, being on the volunteer fire department, that I'm no longer basically available for fire calls.
Thank you.
So, the idea is that being here in the town and living for that long, and I'm glad that Scott Moskensy is sitting here right beside me because he can attest to this, I also have at times in the past actually operated the city's equipment and plowed snow, and I take my 1979 Case 480 backhoe and go out and plow the streets when I have time, when the snow clumps here in South Plowell. And my concern and issue right now tonight is that I feel that this nuisance ordinance that was given to me is far and beyond what I think is viable for anything that has happened here in the city. I have, and like I say, I can ask Scott if he would agree that whenever there's snow, without hesitation, if I am here in town, I take my plow, my backhoe, and go out and plow around the fire hydrants, I plow several other different areas, and I feel that this nuisance ordinance thing that I'm being issued with, not only is it an act of harassment on my part, it's also a very vague and, what I'm going to say, unreasonable document. The scenario is that the pictures, according to what I have been sent, show, and you all have copies of the pictures, shows a building that's been on that property, a shed that's been on that property ever since I bought it back in 2002, and the other picture shows several vehicles sitting on the property. And the first issue that is a specific nuisance, public nuisance declared, is trash-covered premises, and my eyesight is pretty good, so I'm going to ask that all of you say, okay, if according to these two pictures where I see beautiful green grass growing all around the vehicles and the shed, where is the trash? And before we go any further with that, I spoke with Jim, Mr. Mayor, and I also spoke with Dora. How many of these order-to-correct violations were issued in the last 30 days? I don't need to know who, I just want a number. Five, 10, 20, how many?
15.
15.
15, okay. 15 is a number of the places that I would say are literally not even touching the tip of the iceberg of things around the town of South Plowell. This trash-covered premises, there's no trash on that premises. I work seven days a week, and on my off week, when I work seven days on and then seven days off. On my seven days off, I go over to my property and check and make sure that, and in these pictures, you can show the picture with the shed where there's four trashcans in front, those trashcans have never had trash in them, ever, because nobody lives on that property. It's my property that I use as a spare thing that eventually, when I have time, I'm going to do a whole lot of things to the property, but at this point in time, I don't have time to do what would be considered elevation changes, flood plain, damage prevention, all these other things that are listed on this list of things that are, what are in the specific public nuisance declared, I don't see it. The vehicle, according to the junk vehicle thing that it says here, the list of the A, B, C, D, and E, of all of those vehicles that are sitting there on that property, there was one vehicle that had the back window busted out of it. Those vehicles are gone. I was going to do an engine swap on one of them so that I could take and make one car out of two, but since receiving this, I've decided, okay, I don't have time for this. Those two went out to the wrecking yard. I got a hundred bucks for the two cars, okay? So, there was one project that I had that I wanted to do, is now gone. There's other vehicles there that I need parts and pieces off of. They are all intact, they all have four tires and wheels on them that are inflated, that run, and I have pictures to show, and you bear with me. There's the vehicles sitting out in front of my property after I fired them up and drove them out and parked them so that I could mow the grass.
Thank you.
The point is, they're not junk vehicles, just because they don't have current registration on them, which according to the state patrol and according to Kittitas County, a vehicle sitting, and all of these vehicles on this property are sitting inside of my fenced property. They're not out on city easement, they're not parked where other people can walk up to them and steal gas out of them, or break windows, or do anything to them, they're parked inside of my fenced property. They all have valid license plates on them, albeit they are not currently registered, but they have valid license plates on them, the ones that were issued by the state of Washington. And it's my understanding that if it's sitting on your own property and it's not disassembled, it doesn't have to have current registration on it. I mean, granted, they're trucks, they're cars. I don't have time to drive all of them every single day of the week. They are, and if you look at the pictures that I showed, none of them are all in decrepit position, condition, they all look like, two of them, the suburban and the one in the back, just got fresh coats of paint on them. The other one, yeah, sure, it's an 86 vehicle, they've got a little flaking of the top coat. But the idea is, they are not junk vehicles. So, I feel that, those two items that are on the list here, trash-covered premises and junk vehicles, those two things, I don't feel like there's, unless, what I'm going to say at the end of this is, I don't care who filed the notice that needs to have these corrected, these violations corrected. I want to know who is in this room that's going to come over to the property and take some more pictures and say, here is a document signed by you, Mr. Mayor, that says the violations have been corrected. Because first off, I don't have, I don't have the time in 30 days to take care of everything that's on here. The one that's at the bottom, the property maintenance, what does that mean? I mowed the grass. What more do I need to do property maintenance-wise? The one that is the most vague of all is where it states, "Your property is also in violation of Chapter 1510 flood damage prevention. Your property is located within one of your floodplain and is therefore subject to regulations of Chapter 1510. According to subsection, a development permit is required for all development in floodplain." I haven't done anything to that property other than mow the grass and park vehicles on it since 2005 when I bought the property. I have not done anything, that's why the shed has the boards on it, because my neighbor graciously thought the thing was going to fall over when, last two winters ago, part of the roof collapsed. I just have not had time to do anything with these properties, with these sheds, and now that I'm being forced to, I'm going to have to figure out what to do, how to get it done, what do I need to do? But according to what this says, I have to buy a permit to even tear the shed down, and I have to buy the permit before the 30 days is up. How is that fair? The easiest thing for me to do would just be go over there and take the boards back down and let the building collapse. Then I'd be told, okay, you got to clean this up. Well, then I don't have to have a permit, right? Because it's already on the ground? Is that what's being said?
I don't remember anything that says that you have to have a permit.
It states right here in this, "A development permit is required for all development in the floodplain as defined in subsection 1510-050, number five, which includes storage of materials, see below."
Okay.
But that's what I, like I say, everything that's on this list is so vague, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I mean, I've basically gotten rid of a couple of the vehicles, several of the vehicles.
Three.
Four.
Four. I got to see the one in the back, I was over there and looked.
Okay.
Yeah, looks better.
Okay, the point is, the rest of the vehicles that are there are not junk vehicles.
Then they don't fall under that.
Then they don't meet the criteria, that's fine.
Sounds like you're preoccupied with that.
The thing that I'm going to say is, who's going to, are you going to come over, Jim, and take pictures and say, okay, everything's fixed on this?
Somebody will.
Okay, I'd like to know who that person is going to be and when they're going to come, and a phone number so that I can call them and say, okay, I'm ready for an inspection. Come on over and take a look so that I pass and all of my violations are corrected. Because at this point in time, I don't know what other things I need to do over there that will keep me, without having to buy a permit, to do anything, but also make sure that the violations are all corrected. Because the other thing, potential pest or vermin habitat, health or fire conditions. What is that?
All that stuff that's in the southwest corner of that property, under tarps or whatever it is, there's a half a dozen piles there? What's that?
There's one pile underneath. No, there's one pile under a tarp. It's the building material that I obtained to build a porch on the front of that building.
That stuff then is what that means.
So, that, all the stuff that's underneath, the tarp that's under the tree, there's nothing else, there's only one tarped pile, and it's literally virtually brand-new wood that's underneath, you said the southwest corner?
Southwest corner.
Okay, so southwest meaning that, that way and that way.
Yep.
There's no tarps over there. There's no tarp over there.
There's no, it looked like there was.
Looks like tarps over piles.
Anyway, the firewood.
Yeah, does that mean I can't tarp my firewood? My firewood has tarps over the top of it.
You know, I guess, do you interject something in there? You need to interrupt or contribute.
I was thinking maybe twenty.
Yeah. We've opened at least a line of communication here about what's going on, obviously, and you've done a lot of cleanup, which we appreciate and thank you for. I think I was on console, I know I was, when this nuisance ordinance was passed, and it took us a while to do it, it's a difficult thing. And we don't take it lightly, we don't single anybody out. I think this probably is, these 15 letters that went out for violations of that ordinance through either observations, complaints, whatever, or people noticing what's happening in any given place. We don't do that very often, we never have done that very often. And that says to me, it's got to get pretty serious before we do that. A while ago, we've amended this ordinance, so we put a little teeth in it to where it's going to cost somebody some money if they don't come into agreement with the ordinance. Communication is key here. You know, there's arrangements that can be made that will extend that 30 days as long as progress is being made.
Okay, I would respectfully ask for more time to finish up whatever needs to be finished up.
Well, then I would respectfully ask, how much time?
At least 60 days. Like I said, I work seven days a week. Every other week, I have seven days off.
I suspect that we should, no, I can say, yes, you have 60 days.
All right, thank you.
If you've got any questions, well, let me go back and a couple more things. This shed out in the alley, these props are in the right-of-way.
Right. I didn't put them there, my neighbor put them there.
It's okay, it's your shit.
I understand.
You know, and when it comes down, it's not going to get put back there anymore.
Right, yeah, once the shed is removed, those boards are not going to be there.
And like I said, that and whatever is in the southwest corner of that, looked to be more than a pile of firewood to me, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at it again, were the two things that stuck out. I noticed that the cars were gone and the weeds removed. Great.
Okay, and so then...
That's all we're asking.
Okay, so then what about property maintenance?
Well, you know, it sounds like you do that occasionally, mow the weeds.
Yeah, I do that on a regular basis.
I do it every month or two down there on my corner. That's all. We're just trying to, I guess, we really try to provide inviting, workable, efficient town for people to live in. We keep our stuff, railways, blah, 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 nicely kept neat and all that, and I think that we should expect no less from the citizens that live here. You know, a little community pride, a little labor, you know, and time, sure, but it's possible. So, friends and neighbors will say, well, it's a better place. That's all we're after. You can have your 60 days.
Okay.
And we appreciate the time you've put in.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
It's an improvement.
What I'd like to do is, I took a little time myself also, and went around and looked. There are 90 pictures here, all translating to violations of what I've just discussed all over the town of South Plowell. If you'd like to see...
In one degree or another. We're not arguing that.
Okay, the thing I would say is...
And I'm going to say that we believe, according to your list there, your pictures, that these are the best of the best that got the letters the first.
So, you're saying, yeah, you're saying that my property was the first one on the list?
No, I didn't say that, no.
Okay, well, my property was one of the 15 that was on the list.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was one of the 15 that got noticed, yes.
Okay, so the thing that I'm going to say is, there's several pictures here, and I will just, I mean, I can go all night with what's in here.
Well, I know you can, and we appreciate that. If you want to look at those, or if you want to leave them here, we'll look at them at a later date.
Okay.
And some of them might be around, too.
Yeah, some of them might be in 15, and some of their turns are coming.
Okay.
This is not an inexpensive undertaking for the town to do to start with. You know, it does cost the town, the taxpayers, some money. Again, we're very careful in what we do with our taxpayers' money, so appreciate that, don't leave me here and walk away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Like I say, I just went around on my bicycle, so there are a couple of them that are blurring. One of them in particular is the field that's directly across the street from your house. Has they, have they been contacted? Because there's four-foot-high weeds on it.
Well, you know, I'm going to have to say no.
Okay.
It's not to say that there are not going to be, but you know, there are absentee owners, but you are not. We'll get there.
Here's one in particular that I really like. You were saying on the easement, this pile of firewood is within five feet of the city street, so just, if you would, take the time.
We're working on it.
We'll take the time to look at it.
We'll refer that to the street and water committee and, well...
I would like to get your pictures back also.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kraft.
So, we got a letter saying that there was several infractions, one of them was about a public nuisance, and it said, "Trash-covered premises, potential pest, junk vehicles." Which vehicles are junk?
We have no idea.
Well, then how can you put it on here?
We can put it on there because we think there might be some on there.
But if you don't know if it's junk, how can you say that it is?
So, is that what this is going to be?
Is that what's going to be?
Is this going to be one of those things?
What, what things?
I'm going to listen to you, and when I'm talking, you listen to me.
Oh, we take turns?
Yeah, there you go.
I think that's what's...
So, it's your turn.
Well, I just asked you, which one's a junk vehicle?
At the time we took these pictures, there were some that were being worked on at the time, which is also against the parking ordinance in this town.
Yeah, which ones?
The ones that are...
I mean, you took a picture and you're using the picture to tell me that there's junk vehicles there, so which one?
You tell us which one.
The burden of proof doesn't have to be. You're making a claim.
At the time, there wasn't one at the time, because you've got the shed right there that you guys have been using as a mechanic shop, that's either right on the edge of the right-of-way or possibly encroaching on the right-of-way.
I mean, I would love, absolutely love to comply with all the rules of the city, absolutely want to...
Are you living there?
I want to comply with everything, but I need to know what to do. So, tell me which vehicle, and I'll make sure that it gets taken away.
Well, here, on the second page of your letter, it says junk vehicle definition, 8.10.020 definition. Did you read that?
Oh, I read the whole thing.
The one that says tires in the back, is that one operational? Behind the white one?
The question was, which ones are junk? If you're going to say there's a junk vehicle, you have to tell me which one, so that I can get with it.
I'm not going to argue semantics with you. This is the way the ordinance reads.
Yeah.
If a vehicle, let's park there, meets any one of, any three of these definitions, A through E, it is a junk vehicle.
Which three?
You asked that before.
No, I asked you which vehicle. I'm asking you which three does the vehicle's...
Any of the, any of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Certainly.
Three of the six.
Certainly, if you were to look at the place and you were to say, this place meets three of these, so I'm going to write a letter, which three did you have in mind? Or was on your mind when you wrote the letter?
Are any of them junk vehicles?
You just dodged my question. How come you won't answer? I asked you a simple question.
You won't answer my question?
I asked you first!
We can't go on somebody's, we can't go on somebody's property and investigate those kind of things.
So, the place right across the street from here, do they meet it?
We're talking about your place.
Right, so which three of these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items?
End of the day, it says, you will have 30 calendar days from the day of receipt of this letter to voluntarily bring the property into compliance, it's up to you.
We don't know what to do, I'm asking you what to do.
Then you're going to go over your 30 days, I'm done with this conversation with you.
You can't be.
Yeah, I can.
No, you can't be, because I'm asking you, I'm telling you that I want to comply, and I'm asking you what to do, so you won't tell me what to do.
You have a renter in that house?
I'm asking you what to do.
You have a renter in that house?
I already asked you a question, and you're just sidestepping.
Get all of those vehicles out of there.
Are all of them, do they?
Yeah.
I think you're lying.
Far as I know.
I think you're lying.
Far as I...
What? I said, I think you're lying. I think you just made that up. I mean, I talked to this person here about the building, this person, whoever this is, and I said, well, what's the building code? She didn't know. She said she'd be here tonight.
I'm sitting right here.
Oh, great! And then I asked you, and then you said to me, I went by there yesterday and nothing's changed, and I knew that was a bullface lie, because yesterday, the day before...
It's gone.
It was gone. So, why would you lie to me like that?
I didn't have to, I...
You, so, but, so you said that...
I'm not here to argue with you, I'm not.
Oh, yeah, see, so that's the thing, is what I, if I show you that you're not telling me the truth, you're just making stuff up in order to get what you want.
If the structure is removed, then you're coming into compliance with that portion, so there's no more discussion. If the structure is removed, then you're coming into compliance without portioning, so there's no more discussion to have on that.
What was the lie? Why?
The car that's up on blocks in front of the house right now is definitely under the junk vehicle though.
The trailer without an axle in it.
Okay, so, now it'll get you somewhere, so you don't even know. You tell me that. The trailer and the which?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
You're dangerously close to being asked to leave this room. I'm not having a discussion with somebody that won't have a discussion.
I keep asking questions and you won't answer, so I don't know what to do here.
You have a smart aleck attitude and I don't appreciate it, nobody else does, and nobody's gonna call me a liar. The next time that happens, you're out.
I'm not the one who said it. I mean, you know, I'm just trying to say that I want to know what, how can I comply? Which vehicle do you want me to remove? The trailer and the, the, what'd you say? Which vehicle did you say?
There's a truck up there on blocks right now.
The truck on blocks and the trailer, okay, and then if I get rid of those, then what? Then, then that part's done?
We're not gonna babysit you. You've earned yourself thirty days. You have to come into compliance.
Comply what? I mean, can you show me an ordinance that says that a building, that that, this thing in the picture was a building?
Is it gone?
You just, you, why do you keep avoiding my questions?
When you ask questions, there's no answers to.
So there is no ordinance, you're saying? Are you saying there's no ordinance that says that was a building?
No, you said that. I didn't.
I asked you which ordinance says that that was a building. So I can look it up, so we'll never let it happen again. I'm trying really hard to comply.
There you go. If there was a question, if you build anything on your property, you have to have a building permit, if it requires one. In order to do that, you have to show up here and get those, that information.
How do I know if it requires a permit? That's why I'm asking for it. Show me the ordinance. Tell me what the number is, so I can look it up. You can't just pull something out of your head and say, oh, well, yeah.
Enough. Out. You're done.
Okay, it's up to you. I mean, we don't, we don't live there.
This is the first time in twenty years.
Twenty years, I see.
Out.
Yeah, well, we don't live there and everything's taken care of anyway. I just wanted to know.
So this was an exercise in your utility. Just leave.
It was an exercise of
Out.
Your over-rambunctious ordinances.
No, that was special.
So he was the owner, not the renter?
Okay.
It's amazing. He was letting it go on.
all the answers to his questions were in here. All right, failing to correct violation within thirty days of receiving this notice will result in the issuance of notice of civil infraction and commencement of monetary penalty in amount per day the breach violation assessed against the person to whom the order to correct violation is directed for each day and every day or portion thereof on which the violation continues following the date set for correction. On the date, on the out, I want, I will go with and we'll find out whether Mr. Kraft has complied and if he has not, just bring it. We're going. Okay. So you wanna put that on the calendar door so we don't forget that? Thank you. Again, Bernie, thank you very much for your cooperation and your calm doing.
And by the way, thank you for your twenty-seven years on the third.
Yes.
And all your help during the snow.
Yeah, you'll enjoy the pension. All right. All right, any other people?
Thank you for giving me the time to talk before that gentleman.
No, well said. This is not something we enjoy doing. It, it's just, who likes to just tell somebody something they wanna hear? You know, you never see a cop until they arrest you. Minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll read the most.
Except the minutes says, written.
Seconded, the minutes from the previous meeting be accepted as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Bernie. We'll get these back.
I'll stick them up for you. Thank you.
No, that, no, that, this is...
It's going there?
This goes out here, goes out here on the outside.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, all right, I'm gonna take a minute there and apologize for my
St. Moritz.
Indiscretionary handling of that little thing there. They don't see any reason why you should have to verbally spar with someone like Mr. Kraft. So I just decided I wouldn't.
You did better than I would've.
But on the minute. All right.
He came here to pick a fight.
Oh, he did, yeah. Report, Scott.
Slightly less dramatic. I conducted our well sampling for this year. Volatile organic compounds, herbicides, pesticides, nitrates and iron. I'm awaiting the results, but we've never had a violation on our wells and I don't see one coming this go around. I'm cycling all the valves in town. I got about two-thirds of them done. We have ninety-seven mainline valves and about thirty hydrant valves. I'm painting hydrants, got a few yet to finish. Our wells are pumping continuously. We pumped seventy-nine acre feet to date. And I had to borrow the auto gun from our census representative so that I could read meters, but we got ours back. It's been repaired. Be good for this month. Pro Vax here, cleaning and cambering. They'll clean the lift station wet well and haul all of the grease and, and buildup that's in there away. And tomorrow, and then they will repair the main line under the intersection of South Cleland Way and Grant where it's fractured, just about under the yellow line. They'll put a point repair in there and it'll be good as new. I had three hydraulics that I took to the shop and had rebuilt the hydraulic cylinders off the grater. They were leaking. Got to the point where they were leaking pretty bad. They were, they were tough ones to get off. They're big, they're heavy, they're in bad spots. I've been putting it off, but I got it done and replaced some agent hoses on it. And our TIV grant for South Cleland Way has been submitted. HLA got it done. It's signed. It's, it's in their hands and we'll hold for the best and hope we get accepted. Like I said, when I first reported on it, our ratings are awful high on our streets, so I wouldn't hold my breath. And I'm on vacation starting Saturday and I'll be back to work on the twenty-sixth.
Are they gonna be able to repair that by sleeving?
Yeah, just like they do the internal point repairs, the felt sleeve that's, that's got the two-part epoxy in it. I just told them that this one has to be flawless and they said they'll give it extra cure time, so it's absolutely hard with no raveled edges. If they have to, they can go in and grind it smooth.
If you need help setting those cylinders, speak up.
Uh, they're done. I got the last one.
You gotta go on to?
Yeah. Yeah, the moldboard shift, that's, that's a lulu.
Very important.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Dora?
Uh, I have nothing.
Mr. Fire Chief is not here. He's, he did fix seven truck when it would go in that direction.
I heard that night out. Was it that night out for...
Oh, they didn't go silent. No police chief or acting police chief?
What's the word on that? Hasn't...
Haven't heard.
They've chosen him?
Haven't heard. Aaron?
I'll just talk about the short-term residential rentals ordinance. I do think that we need to submit this to Department of Commerce to comment because it's a land use regulation. So we can't adopt it now. We have to give them sixty days to comment. But it basically is the same as Roslin's with the few additions that people were talking about. So, but essentially the same. And I think the one other question I heard is whether lodging tax applies. I believe it does. Since it's under thirty days. So.
Okay, so this is the same as the last draft we saw, basically? Or is there new stuff in it?
I just put in R codes for like the, the conditional use permit for that. Changed the timing on the winter parking to the, to R timing, the couple weeks off for the...
Is that daylight savings time or not? Okay.
You're just gonna include a mechanism to collect that hotel motel tax? Or do we have to do that at all?
No, we don't collect it. The state, they pay the state and the state sends money to us.
They?
The homeowner, whoever is gonna have the ERDO or whatever.
Oh, so they report it like via no tax or whatever, and some of it comes back here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we need time to go look through this before we send it to the Department of Commerce. We can do that? Everybody might, might be comfortable with it, not reading it? Or we can just send it to the Department of Commerce and go for it?
You could send it in draft form to Commerce to, and make changes during the sixty-day period.
Great. Send it out to the Department of Commerce. Okay. Thanks, Aaron. No planning commission. There was supposed to be a second annual, second yearly sewer, regional sewer community meeting, which is canceled again and no news about when. I will say, not this last weekend, weekend before last, on Sunday afternoon, Sixth Street here was a parking lot. Bumper to bumper. People couldn't get through the stop sign. As was, well, Fifth wasn't quite as bad. I had three telephone calls about people roaring up and down the streets looking for another way to get home.
You're all trying to get on West Side Road?
Yeah. And it was in a half hour, maybe, after that. I was in the car around. I went over to town just to see if somebody hadn't stopped them over there. Just disappeared.
I think on their GPS, the little route shows red and they said, ooh, I'm red too. I don't wanna go that way.
Boy, who are we? The leader figured out the way and the rest followed.
You gotta figure out how to keep that red all the time.
Okay, any other reports? Claims against the town.
I'll rule claims against, I guess the town be allowed and checks drawn on the town treasure for the same.
Seconded, claims be allowed and checks drawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business. Boy, this is August. We don't have any.
No, it's because of nuisance, but it's one else. Do you wanna send some more?
Should clean that up.
Yeah, let's, let's send some more.
That's gonna become new, new business. There'll be some right quick.
Well, yeah. All right. Failing unfinished business, new business? There was an amendment that, we took care of that. So there's no more new business, there's no more public to comment left. We have no reason for an executive session. I will defer these pictures to...
Gary and myself?
Gary and Lynn and, yeah.
Just us?
Yeah. And you can look at it. Great. And get it back to Dora so we can have it back. I imagine he's gonna put that into time caps elsewhere. All right, anything else for the go-to the order? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you again for getting up with my dead time.
That's okay.